I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My stand for prayer. Our dear heavenly Father, thank you, this month especially, last month, for our Easter blessings, and the blessings that you bestowed upon us by sacrificing your Son. Thank you for this valedictum rainfall that makes our grass grow. Especially thank you, Lord, for our teachers, our administrators, and most of all, for our outstanding students, and all those who have helped to make our school system great. Please help us to organize, to set policies, do the things that this board needs to do to watch after our children. Please help us work together as a team and always do the right thing. In your holy name we ask.
We've got some very special recognitions tonight, and I do think there are a few people who could not be with us, so we're going to recognize them anyways, even though they couldn't be here. Tonight, we get to recognize a very special individual from each of our schools, and then someone from our entire school system, from among these six, who is, who's been selected as the Teacher of the Year for each school. I think probably, if you talked individually to these teachers, they would tell you that, while they're honored to be selected for this, that they are, usually would say that they accept it on behalf of the amazing colleagues that they work with. We have many deserving teachers in the school system for this kind of recognition. So, tonight, we want to say a special thank you to a few. And so we'll start with Brownwood. Dr. Spears, would you come forward? And Corky Hood. Ms. Hood is a second grade teacher at Brownwood, and she was selected this year as the Brownwood Elementary School Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Hood. Mr. Griggs, you would come forward? And Ms. Laura Skipper. Mrs. Skipper is a first grade teacher at Caldwell, and she is the Caldwell Elementary School Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Skipper. Mr. Hancock, if you would come forward? And Dana Bowers, is Ms. Bowers here? There you are. Ms. Bowers is a special education teacher, and she has been selected as the Teacher of the Year for Nelson Elementary School this year. Let's give her a hand. Ms. Patty, would you come forward? And I think, Ms. Wallingsford's not here tonight, right?
She is not.
Mrs. Tracy Wallingsford was selected, is a sixth grade teacher at Collins Intermediate School, and she was selected as their Teacher of the Year. So, Ms. Patty is accepting this recognition on her behalf tonight. So, congratulations, Mrs. Wallingsford. Mr. Haas? I didn't see... There he is, he was hiding back there.
He's so small.
Mr. Joe Reed Brumley is an eighth grade math teacher at Scottsboro Junior High School, and he was selected as this year's Teacher of the Year for Scottsboro Junior High School. Congratulations, Mr. Brumley. And Mr. Dudley, last but not least, and Mrs. Betty S. Linger, would you please come forward? Mrs. Betty S. Linger is an English teacher at Scottsboro High School. She, this is her forty-fifth year, Mrs. S. Linger?
Forty-sixth.
Forty-sixth year. She was my high school junior English teacher. And so she, it's amazing that after all these years, she is still doing such a fabulous job, and just shaping young hearts and minds. So, congratulations to Mrs. Betty S. Linger on this. And before they, before they leave, Mrs. S. Linger was also selected as the Scottsboro City Schools Teacher of the Year from among these six.
No, no, I feel like I should pay these people for letting me have this job. It is a magnificent obsession, and I really do dread the day I have to retire. So, I'm thankful that I've got a job that I love, and colleagues that are great, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
She was my high school.
There's probably more of us in the room.
I have said about Mrs. S. Linger, she has the knack for making every single one of her students for the last forty-six years thinking, think they are the most special student to her. So, I think we all have thought that, so, very deserving.
Okay, so that moves us to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
This is the consent items. Dr. Spocky, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent items as attached, and that includes board meetings from March 16th and April 6th. It also includes the financial statements and bank reconciliation for March of 2017, and some fund reserves. Nothing has been added to this section since the work session.
You heard Dr. Spocky's recommendation for the consent items. Is there a motion to pass? And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passed? Next item is item number three, the action items. Dr. Spocky, do you have a recommendation for the personnel agenda?
Yes, I recommend that the board approve the personnel actions as attached.
Is there a motion to approve?
It's not moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? Was there a reason why it was removed today?
Yes, we, Mr. Hancock had a recommendation for a position at Nelson, and that person withdrew. And so, he does have a recommendation, but we have not been able to complete the background check yet. So, we hope to have that on the next board meeting agenda.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second, and any further discussion? All those in favor of the personnel action items, say aye? Aye. All those opposed? And Dr. Spocky, do you have a recommendation for action item B, Information Transport Solutions contract?
Yes, and before I leave that, could I just mention, since, since the board just approved the action items, since she is still, I think, still in the audience with us tonight, the board just approved a recommendation for the new principal to follow Mr. Griggs as he retires, and this will be beginning July 1st. How fitting that she was selected as a Teacher of the Year this year. Ms. Corky Hood, would you please stand up? She is, she is very, very excited about this, so, congratulations.
Action item B.
I requested the board award the Wireless Access Point Licensing Renewal to Information Transport Solutions, ITS, in the amount of $41,571 for a five-year renewal, and this is the same information that was presented during the work session.
You heard Dr. Spocky's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So many to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion? I think we had a preview. Any discussion down there, Dan? That's good. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passed? Action item C, carpet bid?
Yes, I request the board award the carpet bid to the Carpet Center for Brownwood Elementary School Library at a cost of $14,595, and to Economy Carpet for Scottsboro Junior High School Library at a cost of $14,707 as attached. And again, this is the information that was presented at the board.
Is there a motion to approve?
So many.
Any discussion after carpet bid? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed? Dr. Spocky, action item D?
I request that the board approve the transfer of the OSR Pre-K program, which involves three high-quality pre-K, OSR classrooms, one at Brownwood, one at Caldwell, one at Nelson, from Impact Learning Center to Scottsboro City Schools.
You heard Dr. Spocky's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
I believe that we'll hold this discussion until we can get more information and get a new superintendent in place to look at the complete and total impact that it would have on our bottom line, in that, at this point in time, we still do not have our mandatory reserve. I second that motion.
There's no, when there's a motion to table an item, we do need the second, and we also need the majority vote, but there is no, we cannot debate that under Robert's Rules of Order. So, let's just go ahead and vote on the tabling of that item. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yes.
Ms. S. Linger, would you like to table it? Mr. Williams? Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
And Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
And I would not like to table. So, let's go ahead and vote on the item. Okay, so we had a motion.
We didn't get to do the motion.
Okay. We need a motion to vote on action item D?
Discussion?
Well, yeah.
After we get the second?
I made a motion.
Motion? Do we have a second? Second? Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes. We still do not have our reserves built up. We are still subject to the state coming in. We do not know the total impact that this will have on our bottom line, and until we do that, I do not think it's physically prudent for us to take this on at this time. That is not saying that it is not a goal. That is not saying that it shouldn't be done at some point in time. But until we know exactly how much it's going to cost, and we get our reserves where they're supposed to be, I do not think we should take this on.
And I feel like it's a wonderful program. I know what the pre-K does. I know how wonderful that a job that teachers do. And our teachers that have been here have worked for very little pay for a very long time without benefits. And, and I do want to take them under our school umbrella. I just, I just felt like since we haven't met that reserve, we are still at least 12% under, that it would be a good idea to wait until we had a new superintendent where he could look at things, or she could look at things, and say, this is where we would meet it. I did some small calculations, just some small things, just because we would take teachers and move them up to their years of experience, which they deserve. And I do believe...
Ms. Gentry, I don't think that we need to have that part in our discussion, because those, if, if we do agree to, to have that, that program under the umbrella, we would have to post those jobs, and we can't talk about the teachers as being our employees at this point.
Okay, well then, let's do just an example, okay? If we were to hire a teacher for that position, who had nine years' experience, they would come into that, and according to our matrix, it would move us up $8,300 and something. That would just be for one teacher. And they would deserve that. But I just don't know how we would pay for that. Now, I know we get funds from Impact, and we also have the extra grant, and that would cover minimal base pay of $38,000. But if they were anything above that, then we would not have any way, we would have to pay it out of our general fund. So, that's, that's my only reason. It was not that I didn't think we should take this program, because I love this program. I'm just thinking, board members, one of our big things we're supposed to do is to look at the money and the finances. And I didn't feel like I had an answer as to where the extra money would come from. And, and these teachers that have been doing this, they work really hard, and they have great training. I mean, the, the pre-K provides wonderful training. So, you know, this is a discussion, and so that's, that's what, just what I'm saying. It's just the money, it's not anything else. It's just, we want to stay, we want to work toward that totally having a one-month, you know, reserve, which we can't do yet. So, that, that's my only reason.
Dr. Spocky?
Probably one. Well, just the, the, the grant, the, and of course, you all have all this information, and then we exchanged some emails about this too, but the, the grant is $85,500 per classroom per year. And so...
We didn't exchange them as a...
I'm sorry.
I don't want, I don't want the public to think we've already discussed this.
No, 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 I shared, I should have said I shared the information with the email about this, answering, answering questions about this. But the, the supplemental grant was that one pager that Secretary Ross handed us that night. The, the purpose of the supplemental grant is for what you're mentioning about the, the additional part of salary, so if you hire somebody with more experience. And the sheet that they gave you is an estimate of what the grant would look like, and they based it on the current staff, both the three teachers and the three auxiliary teachers. Just because, I mean, they don't know exactly who will be, who would be hired for sure, so they just used the current staff. So, that, that is going to, that will cover the salaries. What is not covered is the, and you may remember on this little sheet, it had, we had taken, and I shared all this at the work session, but we had taken all of the items in the current Impact budget, and we went through, and there were some items in their budget that would not need to be in our budget, and then there were some items that weren't in their budget that would either need to be increased in our budget or in our budget. So, you saw the result of that, and it was, if you remember, it was around $5,000 per classroom. So, there is a cost in the school system. What we also talked about, and really, we've done as much as we can to quantify this, but there are some other indirect things that, that would be an impact to the system. So, some of the examples we talked about were CMP. So, these students would be in our CMP program. We don't know, you know, because we don't know, but the students would qualify for, you know, free and reduced meals, or what, you know, we don't know their status in that regard, but that would affect our, perhaps, affect our poverty rate for the school system, or free and reduced lunch numbers, which also affects federal funding, like in Title I and other areas. So, I can't quantify that, because I don't, I don't have that information for the students. The other thing that was mentioned, just as an example of other indirect things, I think Mr. LaRue, and I hope, I hope y'all don't want a whole lot more information out of this, because he's not here tonight, and that gets hairy with the E-Rate. But we don't, we don't get to count those students in our formula with E-Rate, and we would get to count them, and he said that would be a benefit to us. Right now, we're not getting that money. So, I can't, I've, I've got, I've done as much as I can to quantify. So, there is an estimated $5,000 per program behind the teacher salaries that you see here. But I, I can't get exact dollar amounts, and even this is an estimate. It's a, it's a conservative estimate in terms of, like we do everything else, kind of over-budget if anything. Some of this might not cost as much as we've got estimated. But those items, we, it would be just a guess, really, in terms of the impact on those numbers. So, I think this is about as close as we can get. But there, there is a cost to the system. And as you know, I've been screaming ever since I got here that we have financial issues, and we are in a better place than we were two and a half years ago. But as I've said repeatedly, we're not out of the woods yet. So, I understand that concern, but in terms of getting more information, this is about as close as you're going to be able to get without taking the program in and knowing exactly what the, getting the students to fill out the free and reduced forms, and all, you know, those kinds of things, I don't think I can get any closer. But the supplemental grant, as I understand it, moves up and down based on the teacher's experience that you hire. So, if, if you hired three teachers that were at the bottom of the salary schedule, there would not be a supplemental grant. But then again, it would cover most of the salary in the grant. If you hired somebody with, you know, several years of experience, and you could see on that sheet, it was different at each school, for the teacher and the auxiliary teacher. And the reason they were different is it was based on their experience. So, that's, that's as close as, I mean, as best, as, as much as I can tell, I don't, I don't know how anybody would be able to give you more information.
Right now, we're having to flex funds in order to make the reserves.
Correct. I have been since 2008.
I just don't see taking this on when we're still having to flex funds. I think that doesn't make sense for us at this time, especially with the transition coming up, and talk of layoffs.
Well, Denise, is it not something that if we chose right now, just to wait, that we could even pick it up later?
We chose to wait for ten years.
Well, but now, but now that's...
Can I just talk for one second? I know, but, and, and in, in Dr. Spocky's respect to Dr. Spocky, she inherited this as well. It's not like we're trying to hurry this up because Dr. Spocky's leaving, and a new superintendent is coming in. She inherited this decision from a ten-year agreement with Impact Learning Center, and they carried this and actually nourished this program, and basically is handing it to us myself.
I agree, it's a great program.
And it's not for this school year, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
It's not starting until...
Well, if, if the, if the board approves, the next thing that would happen in my mind is the, we have to have a job description and a salary schedule. The salary schedule is up for review at the next work session and board meeting anyway, so it would be part of the 2017, '18 salary schedule. The auxiliary teacher, we already have a teacher salary schedule. The job description for the auxiliary teacher, we don't have it. We do, we have a draft put together so that it could be on the next. So, that would be the next thing that needs to happen. You could, I think the idea is to go ahead and work on the transition, because there's going to be some, what can get the employees under our umbrella and begin the process, there's going to have to be work done on this, because we basically, we've got to sit down with OSR and with Impact and us, and the grants have to be restructured, because the budget is different. And so, they, they've already submitted all that. So, we have to take three separate grants and restructure the grants and pull them up under our umbrella. As Craig, you know, he's been part of these discussions, as Mr. Hyde is working on the budget for 2000, October 1st through September 30th, '17, '18, it would be part of our budget. You could, you know, as y'all talked about, any additional cost could be, as I mentioned in the email, from your general fund and/or, as Amy Childress and I were talking a little bit about it the last meeting, I mean, we're not proposing this necessarily, but you can use some title funds. But that, but those budgets, that process, we'll know what those amounts are this summer, and that process would start so, for the October 1st through September 30th budget. So, once those are set, you can't change those budgets, but it's all better if we do it in the, you know, before the fiscal year. Regarding the employees, I would, I would just say, I think it would be very messy from an employment standpoint to try to do it in the middle of the school year, because you basically would have, the current staff are employees in another organization, like a separate business almost. They're physically in our schools, but they would have to be released from their positions, and then jobs posted and hired in the middle of the year. And if they were the same people, that's fine, and I'm not saying they will be or won't be. I don't have any idea what the candidate pool would look like, and that we would need to legally follow our process in hiring. So, it's going to be cleaner if that happens in the summer, so that you have your staff in place, and they're working for the school system, if that's what's going to happen.
I believe you brought this to us a pretty good while ago. They've indicated that, Impact indicated that they wanted us to take it over.
Oh, well, I'm sure this has been an ongoing conversation, but they hardly let me get in my seat here. Good, they gave me a day or two to get my stuff moved in, but, and they've been very patient, because I knew right away, we had, I mean, during the circuit process, I was told, we've got financial issues here. So, I basically have just been, and really, we just felt like we were getting to a place, you know, where we could even begin to seriously talk about this. Another factor was not just the money, but we have to have somebody to manage these grants. I know it may not look like a lot, but anytime you are awarded a grant like this, there is some work to do, and they'll, they'll tell you that's part of the problem, is they're having to have staff to manage the grants. So, I, I didn't feel, I feel like now we have the people in place at the district level that can handle that, that were set up to do that. So, those were the two issues, the finances and this. And no, we're not where we need to be financially, that's not news. But we are in a better place than we were, but it's, it's not like, I've said, we're not out of woods yet, for sure.
It appears. The supplemental grant would pretty much cover the, the, it says, over short, short policy, which is probably around $15,000.
It's going to cover, the way I think you have to look at it, it's going to cover the salaries. This other...
But it won't cover the salaries if they aren't... But it won't cover the salaries if they aren't entry level.
Well, the grant's going to pretty much cover that, but what you see on the left, are you looking, do you have that?
Well, I know what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, if you look at it this way, the supplemental grant is like $13,000.
Well, that's just-
Give or take. It's an estimate.
Right.
And the over, the overage per classroom is $5,038 approximately. So, you do that three times, it's approximately 15. We get approximately 13, so that's sort of a wash. So, I mean, I'm just looking at it number-wise from a simple point. So, then, the only thing that we would have to worry about would be essentially the difference in salary, as far as how many years the teachers have taught, and so that's all I'm saying. If you look at one, someone who has nine years, 10 years' experience, looking on a salary matrix, it's at least eight or $9,000.
This is the reason I wouldn't look at it like that, because the grant pretty much covers the salary if they're, as you said, at the bottom of the pay scale.
And their insurance, does it cover their-
Yeah, it's all, let's see, it's all broken down on that sheet. You've got all the benefits, retirement, social security, Medicare, unemployment, insurance, all the fringes are listed separately for the teacher and the auxiliary teacher, and that's the bottom of the salary schedule.
Right.
And again, you all have not approved an auxiliary teacher position or salary schedule, I mean, a job description or a salary schedule, but this is based on what they recommend. Okay, so, the supplemental grant, the only reason you're going to get that is if they are, if the people you hire are above and beyond that experience range. So, that's going to cover the difference you're trying to calculate.
You hope.
No, it is, that's how it's designed.
It would cover all of it, no matter?
That's the purpose of that grant.
I mean, if we hired three teachers that have eight, nine, 10 years' experience, then we'll get that extra amount, no matter what it is?
That's my understanding, and so like, this sheet that she gave us, the one that I emailed to all of you, so you see there are three, these are the grants, the supplemental grants, and you can see the total amount was almost 13.5, but, so there are three teachers. They're the same job, the same job description, but the grants, you noticed, are very different, several thousand dollars difference between, you know, this teacher's supplemental grant, this teacher's supplemental grant, and the reason for that is because they have different years of experience. And so, according to what they communicated to me, that's the design of this. It's to cover those step raises, and it's based on the minimum state teacher's salary schedule, which is what our current salary schedule is. What is not covered by the supplemental grant or the grant, because the grant is eating up, the salaries are eating up the grant in the school system. Impact has different salaries for their teachers and auxiliary teachers than we would have here. So, the grant is pretty much going to be paying the teachers, and it wouldn't even cover that, what you're talking about, except that they have promised us the supplemental grant, and that's part of the deal. What is not covered is the other stuff that we still have to have in the budget, which is the items you see there. We had to estimate, but it's a pretty decent estimate, maybe a slight overestimate, but it's, the reason it's a pretty decent estimate is because it's based on what they have been spending in the program, and again, we had to add some cost, and we could take away some cost because of the different requirements, but it's about, as best we can estimate, around $5,000. So, that $5,000 is per classroom per year is pretty much what you're looking at for additional, and as you said, there is additional cost in the system. I don't know how much money you'd get extra in E-Rate, or title one money, or CMP dollars. I don't, and of course, all that works different. You know, each of those has a different budget, different processes. I don't have a way to give you a number on that, but it would, it would be an part of this.
But if, let's just say we hired three teachers, let's just say they had, they all had nine years' experience, so their pay would go up $8,000 times three.
So, the grant would be higher.
So, the grant-
The supplemental grant.
So, the supplemental grant would be enough to cover whomever we hired.
That's what they're saying. The grant is 85.5, period.
And will-
The supplemental grant is what varies from classroom to classroom, based on the experience of your auxiliary teacher and your teacher.
Now, will the teachers, let's just say, will the teachers that are in that program, will those years count toward teaching?
What we would have to do is, when a candidate is selected, and this is true now in our school system, when we hire a teacher or we hire, for any position, it's easier for when you're hiring teachers, because you pretty much look at teaching experience and you give them one-for-one credit. It gets complicated if you're hiring, for example, like this auxiliary teacher, depending on what kind of experience they bring in, you'll probably have to make some decisions. But we have a payroll action form, and we, teachers is pretty clean, so pretty much you give them, if somebody had been in a pre-K classroom for nine years, then we would give them one-for-one credit.
That's what I-
That's consistent with what we've done. If somebody has some part-time experience and/or they have something that maybe some of the skill set needed to do the job they were doing matches part of what we need, but not really in its entirety, we might do a one-for-two or a one-for-three, something like that. But we try to be consistent, and we started, we document that we have a payroll action form, and it goes through the CSFO, superintendent, and HR person, so that we make sure, hold ourselves accountable to be consistent with, you know, how we've done that in the past. The teachers are the easiest ones to do, because pretty much it's classroom, year of classroom experience, per year of classroom experience that you're giving them credit for on the salary schedule. But the supplemental grant is supposed to address that. What the grant and the supplemental grant for us is not going to address are these items here.
$13,000.
Right.
But, I mean, I, because see, that wasn't clear the last time. If, like I said, if we hired three teachers that had all that experience, then that $13,000 wouldn't be $13,000. It would be, it would be more.
It would follow the-
It follows the experience of the teachers. That's how-
And she did explain that to us in the work session, I thought. Well, but I thought that 13 was always that we would get next year.
They were just using an example.
They had it, I mean, like, they're just having to, rather than just tell us about it, they gave us this worksheet based on our, the current, I said, our current staff, it's their current staff, based on their current staff, and they have the information about their experience and all that, so they utilize that information just so you would have an example to look at.
They just didn't, I know they paid less, they just didn't count the experience as the teacher was teaching pre-K. That experience didn't count with the pay scale. But we would.
I didn't follow the first part of what it said.
Right.
They probably don't have a salary schedule like we do.
It's totally different pay, the way they pay, their pay structure is different than what ours would be, and so, all of these items on this front page, that totaled that $5,000 difference, those items are covered in the Impact Grant, the 85.5, because their salaries are not taking up as much of their budget. And again, they have some things in their budget that are taking up a lot. For example, the food was, the meals and snacks was around $10,000 per year, whereas for us, we were able to, you know, that's very different in terms of our budget, and in fact, indirectly helps us in terms of how that gets calculated in our CMP program. So, it's, this is as close, I think this is about as numerical, as quantitative as we can get this, without knowing the kids and the teachers.
I still say that's money out of our budget when we don't have our reserves meant, that we don't need to take on until we have new leadership and our reserves meant.
Well, we have a motion, we have a second, and we're just, unless there's any further discussion, we just need to move forward with the vote. And we have further discussion. Mr. Williams? Ladies? Okay, so we have our motion to approve, we have our, well, we have our recommendation, we have our motion, we have our second, we had our discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Can you do a roll call?
Yes, sure can. I'm sorry, back up. I'm going to do a roll call, but I'll start it with Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, all those in favor, how do you vote? Mr. Stewart?
No.
Ms. Gentry?
I am an impasse, because I, as long as we can get the money like we should and cover the salaries, I will concede yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Motion carries.